Our dear Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this wonderful opportunity to meet as a community and to work out solutions and to recognize achievements of this wonderful community that we have. We pray for thy Spirit to be with us, that we'll remember that we are all sons and daughters of God and that we had the wonderful opportunity of living in a country where we can have these kind of city council meetings. And please bless us with thy presence, we pray, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. You may be seated. And yes, thank you, Trevor. First item of business is public comments, and as soon as I get that list. And we have a good number of people who are interested in speaking this evening. A reminder, citizens are advised that they must limit their remarks to the council to three minutes. Council may refer items to staff to review and/or research at a future council meeting, so we may not comment on it this evening, but we will certainly take it seriously. And first name on my list is Jose Luis Zesate.
Good night.
Good night.
Do we have someone here to serve as an interpreter? We have been working on that this evening. Thank you. Do we have somebody? Are you able to serve as an interpreter real quick?
Please, please.
Okay, adelante entonces.
Okay. My name is Jose Luis Zesati. I live in 1440 South First, Sunnyside, Washington. Happy to be here with the new city councils. I just wanted to share with you, I'm 50 years old, living here in Sunnyside. And for the first time, I feel represented by the city council.
A pause, please. I don't think your mic is on, or...
And he's happy to have his people to represent him.
I've been there for approximately 23 years.
It's been approximately 23 years.
I ran for city council.
You ran for city council.
And I've had some bad experiences.
And he took with him some bad experiences.
I felt discriminated because I didn't feel like I was welcome. And I wasn't treated the best.
He felt like he wasn't treated the best.
By some members of the council. I felt discriminated because I was Hispanic. And it took me 23 long years to see that change. The systems made me disappointed when I went to the city council. And when I talk about the systems, I just saw a person from the San Isai prison who was sentenced unfairly.
He was lied to by the council. I think that's what he said. Sorry. What else did he say?
That a month ago, a person from the San Isai prison left the prison because he was sentenced unfairly.
It's been a couple of months since somebody that was incarcerated was let out for something that was wrong.
He was unjustly accused, I believe is what he said.
And I hope that he has received a apology from that person.
He hopes that there was a that we ask for forgiveness for our errors.
I would like to see an interpreter professional because if we want to make changes in Sunnyside, we need to be on the same page.
In the future, he's hoping that we have professional interpreters so we can see changes.
Because Sunnyside is for everyone, not just one person. That's what I would like to do. If we want to make those changes, we need to be on the same page because we also pay taxes.
In order to make changes, we have to be on the same page because they pay taxes as well.
In the future, I would like to be on one of these seats. Gracias.
Thank you, sir. Gracias. For those who are interested, we just finished a meeting prior to this one where we talked about interpreter services and we will get a report on that later on in this meeting. So that is something that council is actively working on. So for those who want to know, we're working on finding interpreters for meetings. So that's an idea that's being processed and progressing. Okay, my next name on my list is, I'm gonna say this wrong and I apologize in advance, Jerika Nava. Did I get even close? Kind of there. Okay, my apologies.
It's Jerika Nava.
Okay.
Hello, my name is Jerika Nava. I am currently a senior here in Sunnyside. And I just wanted to bring a comment from a youth perspective. Just as Jose Luis was saying, I'm really glad that we're finally having representation here on our council. Being here in Sunnyside all my life, I kind of never paid the most attention to our council and now I feel having this representation, I have been a lot more connected to my community. And I really appreciate that coming from, you know, Karen, Vicky, and Jorge. I feel like I have built a lot more connections with my community and a lot more opportunities have opened up for me by just connecting with them. So I just wanted to leave that comment and, you know, wish you guys luck as you guys continue to hold these positions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next name on my list is Jean Mendoza.
Good night. Good evening. My name is Jean Mendoza. I am Jean Mendoza. I'm the director of Friends of Topnich Creek. I'm the executive director of the Friends of Topnich Creek. I believe that you all need to see my face. Here are my papers. We don't agree with the decision of the Sunnyside RNG project. Friends of Topnich Creek is not in agreement with the city of Sunnyside's recent decision, the SEPA decision regarding the Sunnyside RNG project. Don't forget I want to share these papers with you. Gracias.
Thank you, Jean.
Thank you. Next name on my list is Maria Fernandez.
Good evening, Maria Fernandez. With AIA. I wanted to play a little excerpt of the January 9th meeting, the council meeting here. I have some concerns in terms of the way that some of your members treat the new council members and including the community. And I think this is pretty reflective of the sort of attitude that we're witnessing as as community members.
Questions for the chief?
No, but I do want to reiterate on the fact that we really appreciate the, when you notify the leadership team about what's going on and what's happening. It's wicked. It's horrible. You know, that kind of thing. So thank you.
I was really disturbed by that comment. A mocking of the residents was completely inappropriate. I found it to be very unprofessional. And I'm becoming a council member here with the city of Sunnyside. My feeling is that when you enter into public service because you've been elected by the people who wish that you represent their concerns, their ideas, and their feedback, that they would not be mocked when they are contacting you, asking for some assistance. I think that the issue at hand is that if residents have concerns, so much so that they need to be mocked, then maybe the problem is with city communications or a lack of city communications, a lack of clarity around process, protocols, procedures, rules, ordinances, and the residents don't deserve to be mocked. I also took, I was also offended by the January 22nd council meeting, particularly at the 51-minute mark, which you can refer to because it is online, where the personnel manual was discussed and the attempts at shutting down and silencing Deputy Mayor and Councilwoman Frausto from asking questions. I won't play that piece because I don't have the time. The point is, it seems to me particularly disturbing that Counselor Hart would ask Mayor to interrupt Counselor Frausto to ask her question would even be relevant to the discussion. Again, there's just a lack of respect, a lack of courtesy in your treatment of the new council members and ultimately, the community is watching. They voted, the community voted for a change for a reason in council members. And we are talking about those things. We are storing that information for future activities in action. And so I would hope that you all would treat your new counselors with respect that they deserve.
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez. And if you are able to stay after the meeting, I'd be happy to talk to you about that. All right, next name is Jim Stevens.
Jim Stevens, 328 Grandview Avenue. One of the things that Ms. Fernandez mentioned that I think is pertinent is the respect of the community and the citizens in regards to city ordinances, et cetera. And we had the violations of city ordinance in Sunnysides are replete. The community property of residents with their homes, which is one of their biggest investments, is not protected. It's supposed to be protected by the community. And we say that, well, we don't have enough police, yet we're hiring people for other jobs. And yet the safety of the community and protecting this investment is important. I know that in our neighborhood, in the neighborhood where I work, where there's a lot of people around there that are not people of good means at all. And there's dogs that are barking all the time. These people should not have to put up with that. This is disturbing to them. It interrupts their sleep. And I will tell you that these people have health issues as a result of it. Sounds pretty crazy. That's what I do for a living. And I will tell you, these people do have a problem. And they're afraid, they're intimidated to come forward. And I've been told on the phone, well, you know, dogs bark. That's what they do. It's the second time somebody's told me that. This is ridiculous. There's an ordinance against that. The other thing is the issue that we have brought to the council and some people have done research about over $2 million disappeared out of a fund that I'm gonna paraphrase this, were ostensibly federal funds. This was outside of the law. And nothing's been done about it. Two, over $2 million. And we're ignoring it. I don't know how we can do that. And the information that has been brought forward has been some pretty compelling research. So I think that hopefully this new council will look into this, will do something about it, and bring an answer to the community. And again, as Ms. Fernandez said, we're bringing this to you as a respect, and this has been going on for months. And as far as I'm concerned, there's not been a lot of respect shown because I quite frankly haven't heard any answers back. We don't have a newspaper. We don't have a radio, but there are ways to communicate with the public. You know, get a website or whatever you have to do. Get it on there and let the people know that, hey, we're doing something about this. So again, we want to welcome the new council members. We look forward to working together, making this community a really great community. It's in a state of decline right now. And I hardly believe that we're gonna bring this community together. Thanks.
Thank you, sir. Next is Tom Dolan.
Tom Dolan, I live here in Sunnyside and I'm a police chief here. I'm not afraid to come forward. Since he's not here, sorry. So I had a little problem with Trevor. It's just a little problem, though. It's I had training.
Sir, if I can interrupt you for just a second, I prefer if you don't indicate particular individuals or staff by name in a meeting.
Well, this is a fun thing.
You can do that by a title. He's Community and Economic Development Director. But we had some problems, some complaints from staff that individuals should not be addressing them by name in a public meeting. This is recorded and this is just inappropriate.
I guess I need more training. Thank you.
And you're the first one I've called out on that one, so
I appreciate it.
I'm not gonna tolerate that from anybody else either, so.
But I did talk to him ahead of time and said I came down here to talk to him. And it was about the training. I would really, I was wondering if I am going to receive a certificate or I want to be able to register that with WCA or is it WCA?
AWC.
AWC, sorry. Too much going on, sorry. I just wondered about that because we did get training for something that I was told that we put the city in jeopardy of being sued. So I'm having a hard time getting around that and I'd like to know if you're able to find out where that took place and what we did to, I was told because we came to a meeting that we were putting the Sunnyside in jeopardy of being sued for the appearance of being unfair when our job is to bring forward the concerns of the citizens and give it to council and say all these 25 people in the audience are worried about this construction project. And we gave you the 10 items that we were asked to put in there or the changes and thought we did a pretty good job. And then here we get taken off of it and told to, you know, it makes you feel like you're not worth anything when you're taken off of a project like that. And they bring in a hearing examiner who agreed with me on several of the things when we spoke with him at the meeting. So I'm just curious if I get credit for that training because YVCOG, I guess they're credited for all that kind of stuff. And I've been hearing a lot about training lately, so.
To answer your question, Mr. Dolan, you and I had a conversation over the phone shortly after that incident where I attempted to explain, apparently I did not do it adequately and I apologize for that if it was not understandable on my part, but there's certain rules regarding especially the planning commission and so that's what that all pertained to. There was, it was simply not something that I had a choice on. And I don't know if the manager wants to take a step on that one and try to explain that a little more fully, Ms. Alba?
And actually, I'm gonna refer to our city attorney, Ben Riley. And Mr. Riley, if you'd like me to bring you up to speed, we had city planning commission members come to a city council meeting to discuss a project that had not been heard by council and did not know about it in a official capacity. Yes, Mr. Dolan?
We did not come here to discuss it with council. We came here to speak at this microphone about upcoming projects and how
But you are on the planning commission.
I am.
Okay.
Correct. So I'm gonna let Mr. Riley then address the planning commission members coming before the city council and discussing business of the planning commission when it hadn't been brought to council's action yet. So I'll let Mr. Riley address that.
So real quick, the planning commission is an appearance of fairness situation doctrine, which that means that if it's before the planning commission to review and make decisions on advisory or otherwise for the city council, that has to occur first before it can be discussed with the city council in public meetings. And so if you're discussing projects that are before the planning commission at this point that haven't been decided on or given opinions on at that point for city council to approve later, it can't be discussed with the city council first. Does that make sense?
Sort of, but the problem was that we, I made a motion to table and everyone but one council member who happened to own the land that was sold to the contractor, he voted on this too, which was totally out of line. So I don't, I'm having a hard time figuring out how this all took place and how we were put in that position. When we came here, I tabled the motion. I had a motion seconded, tabled. There should have been no discussion about anything and yet we were taken off of it and said, oh, you guys, you guys are making the city look bad. We're gonna we're gonna get sued by what you just did.
Mr. Dolan, I would invite you to have a discussion with Mr. Riley after tonight's meeting.
Is that legal?
I would think so. Now, he can explain it to you a little more fully and so.
Okay.
You want to continue? I'm sorry.
No, I think probably my three minutes is about up, isn't it?
I would think so.
Without translating.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Dolan. Britten Moore.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Britten Moore, Sunnyside. I want to bring up something that came up at one of the council meetings in January. Deputy Mayor Galván had asked a question about the purchase of some television sets, I think for the community center. I think there was four of them. Great question, by the way. And the answer was as well, great for training for the community center and as opposed for the city hall at the basement. What we didn't know that I have come to find out is that Integrity Janitorial Services stole all the TV sets and a bunch of other equipment at the community center. I'm requesting that you look into possibly putting in cameras out there so this doesn't happen again. Which brings me to my next point. We had the warming center, which was a great gesture. I'm not sure if the execution was so wonderful. From my calculations, I've asked for some records and I know I don't have all the numbers correctly, but at least 21 people signed up for overtime. That was time and a half, so that was about 210 hours at $40 an hour, if they're making $27 an hour. That's $8,400. That money could have been better spent at a hotel room, possibly a donation to Rod's house, having people stay there. Not to mention that the person in charge is not a city employee and he's, I don't even think he's a US citizen. And I'd like to know what he was paid because he has more than that many hours. I have questions about that. I think we could have had volunteers not being paid to handle that. That's a lot of money. I'm guessing it's probably hit over $10,000. That would be my guess. But I was told that the employees were told not to clock in. That is disturbing if that is true. The next thing I wanted to mention was we had some snow days, some really bad weather this year. City Hall was closed a few of those days. One of the days, a couple of the days, school was open. The city hall was closed. I understand that there was a baby shower for an employee on that day when school was in operation, but city hall was closed. That maybe could be clarified or answered properly, but that is what I've been told. I think that there's too much playtime, too much money being squandered. We're in a situation where water department has no money. We just have to quit spending. This has just got to stop. I'm asking again for a forensic audit.
Thank you, Ms. Moore. Next name is Joyce Taylor.
My name is Joyce Taylor, T-A-Y-L-O-R. This is not my first this is not my first rodeo. My husband was mayor for eight years. He was also on the city council for 20 years. And I'd like to see a freeze on all raises and new hires until properly trained and educated people are in place. It saddens me. I've lived here 80-some years. And it saddens me to look at my streets, look at our buildings, look at our sidewalks out in the middle of the street and picnic tables on the street. What are we thinking? Using that money that could go to better places for better things? Get get with it.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Next name on my list is Monica Niemeyer, and I believe she's on the Zoom call. Ms. Niemeyer?
Yes, your mayor. Can you hear me?
We can, yes.
Okay, thanks so much. Monica Niemeyer. And I, N-E-M-E-Y-E-R. I realized I've never spelled my name, so I'm sorry. First, I'd like to thank the council for allowing Mr. Riley to answer the questions that I posed on January 22nd, I believe, on the interlocal agreement with Gram U for the animal control services. And I hope to have those questions to him by the end of the week, so thank you. I also wanted to talk about the 2024 adopted budget, specifically the ARPA fund. I would like the council to consider providing an ongoing update when ARPA funds are spent and then updating the ARPA spending sheet that was provided. Or if even possible, keeping those funds tracked separately. I actually don't know how those details work. But just some sort of distinction and clarification. And the reason I'm asking that is because as of 11/22/2023, for the ARPA spending budget that was provided, ARPA funds were $2,935,438 that were left unspent. And it was stated that those funds were going to be put in the general fund. Meaning, the beginning fund of the 2024 general fund was actually lower than what it, than what's actually reflected in the adopted budget because that's comprised of ARPA funds. So my question is, do then do the expenditures stated in the 2024 adopted budget include the allocated spending for the ARPA funds? My concern being, if the ARPA fund spending is not included in the expenditures, then would not the general fund then be in the negative? If the ending fund balance is $1,707,923.82, and that is to include the ARPA fund, well, that leaves a negative balance. Also, for the planner and the HR positions that are being paid with ARPA funds, is there an ongoing plan to ensure those positions are still intact beyond once the ARPA funds are spent? And for the youth programs, are they being dedicated to specific programs for the youth? Or are they being used for payroll? And lastly, hopefully I get this in, in January 20, on January 8th, we talked about an interlocal agreement for spending for the for the well, well 1 and well 2. And that expenditure was actually coming out of the general fund and not not the fund it was assigned to. And I find that odd because that was January 8th. We were only eight days in. How was the water fund, Alex, that was specified for that already in the negative? Why did we have to pull from the general fund so soon? If I'm looking at the budget right, there was over 300,000, maybe 300,000. But, well, I'm short on time, so I'm talking fast here. So thank you very much for your time and I look forward for feedback. Thank you.
Right. Thank you. And I can assure you that more than likely, your first question will be answered as this meeting goes on, so.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much.
All right. Next name on my list is Sharon Dolan.
Hello, I'm back. My name is Sharon Dolan and I am a resident of Sunnyside. I believe that under the direction of the mayor, there was a violation of OPMA. These violations occurred January 8th, 2024 meeting. Agenda item that I am addressing is appointment of boards and commissions, YVCOG vacancies. During council discussions, there was some confusion on the part of Mayor and Councilmember Hart as to the number of vacancies. Thinking there were two vacancies, Councilmember Ripley and Hart were recommended for those spots. Councilmember Frausto expressed a desire to be considered for an appointment. The mayor expressed he felt experience was preferred. The new deputy mayor then said he believed that there were three vacancies. More discussion from Mayor and Councilman Hart about only two vacancies. YVCOG Executive Member Police Chief Lehman addressed council and confirmed there indeed were three seats available. The mayor suggested discussion, that this discussion The mayor suggested discussion, that this discussion continue after meeting. A bit later, the meeting adjourned. Violation number one. After the meeting adjourned, there, there was a meeting held with a quorum discussion, and the meeting was about discussions of appointees to YV Cog. A decision was made and action was taken. The appoint, there was appointments made to that committee. Violation number two. The action taken was then included in many minute, meeting minutes when meeting had already adjourned. In closing, I would like to commend those that were current on OPMA training and acknowledge recent training at all, that all the other council members or all of you just took. Thank you for that. Though experience is valuable, current training and knowledge and res- respect of laws and respect of other, your other fellow, fellow council members is paramount. Thank you, Sharon Dolan.
Thank you, Ms. Dolan. Sandra Sossati.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sandra Sossati. Um, I just wanted to say thank you if you guys are already, if the council is already looking into those translation services, so I do, I'm looking forward to the update later on in the meeting. And then also, I want to see if there is a possibility that there's also public comment either toward the end of the topics that are being um, talked about, just because I think public comment in the beginning doesn't give us the opportunity to also public comment towards certain agenda items or that are not on the agenda after they're being talked about. And then also, I would also like to invite, uh, city, the city council members. There will be a rally at four PM tomorrow outside of the admin building here in Sunnyside. Um, since we are also wanting to hold our admins accountable on the mental health of our, the safety of our students because we are paying into this levy and it is due tomorrow, so I would invite all parents that are concerned or just want to show up in support for our students. You're more than welcome to be present. I would like to see more involvement with the city and the school, um, you know, coming together to be on the same page for the safety of our kids. Um, y lo voy a repetir en español para los que no entienden, mañana vamos a tener una reunión afuera de el distrito escolar que está en la calle seis, para los papás que están ah, queriendo participar en lo que es la salud mental de nuestros hijos y la seguridad especialmente en las situaciones recientes que han pasado en el distrito escolar. Mañana a las cuatro para las personas que quieran, ah, compartir con nosotros. Gracias.
Thank you, Ms. Sossati. And if it helps, uh, council has already started discussion on different ways to deal with the public comment and make sure that that information is out there and you have better opportunities for informed comment. So we are working on that. We have ideas. We just haven't come to a conclusion yet or taken action, so. Next name on my list, uh, Michael Kennard.
Got a dime just by bending over and picking it up. What a deal. My name's Mike Kennard, uh, happy to be able to speak here for three minutes. And, um, but I'm saddened, and I'm saddened over the fact that, um, during the last campaign, which was spirited, which was involved, which was, uh, thorough, which was, my goodness, huge. Um, that there were some shortcomings, and I thought, that's not right. I mean, shouldn't be, shouldn't be like that, shouldn't it? But nevertheless, my golly, it was. And what I witnessed as a candidate uh, was that people that were deciding that they were going to, um, campaign were careless, I guess, about their respect for somebody else's signage or protocol or courtesy or whatever you want to call it. But I thought it was shameful. That's a word I'm going to use, shameful. That somebody who is not just a council member, but is the deputy mayor doesn't see fit to even have the courtesy of being, I don't know, decent to somebody else. I, I understand political work and, and whatever, but gosh, you know, we got to be at least kind about it, don't we?
Miss Kennard, I would have to remind you to be careful. You're getting awful close to some dangerous territory here as far as calling out individuals. So be very cautious, sir, please.
Wow.
It's in the same spirit as I mentioned to a previous speaker, sir. It's, let's be cautious about calling out names.
I'll, I'll, um, this is going to cut into my time here a little bit, but I won't have to use the name. I was amazed at during this spirited campaign and the number of people that were involved and participating, that there was a considerable amount of what I would call difference that was happening. And the difference was that I went with my wife to a concert and returned from that concert. Um, and that was, um, two and a half hours later. And the sign that was, that I had put in that location, and it was huge location, was suddenly covered over by something else, virtually covered over by something that was a, uh, maybe ten feet, exactly in the same proportion and everything else, and effectively occluded that, that, um, opportunity. I thought, boy, that's, that's kind of mean spirited, isn't it? It's kind of, it's kind of nasty. That's kind of, um, the best posture that I think we can do. And, or hey, Galvin?
I'm asking you. Mr. Kennard, I ask you, please sit, sit, and do not be calling out people by name. Next name on my list is, uh, Chelsea. She's on the Zoom call. Chelsea? Are you with us?
Yes, I'm right here.
Okay.
Yeah. Hi, everyone, and, um, thank you, City Council, for, um, letting me give public comment.
Please state your name and, and city of residence, so please, too. Thank you.
Um, I'm Chelsea Dimas. I reside in Sunnyside. Um, I use she/her a pronouns. Um, I am just wanting to invite community to my grand opening that is happening this weekend. I recently announced my candidacy to run for State Representative District Fifteen, um, and represent our diverse communities. Um, the grand opening is happening here, um, in downtown Sunnyside at five oh five South Seventh Street. Um, you will see the signs, so it won't be hard to miss, and it'll be taking place Saturday, um, February seventeenth from three to five PM. Um, all are welcome. There will be appetizers and, um, some drinks. Um, yeah, I am asking people to RSVP, so, um, just the formality, and that'll be at chelseaforwall.com/events. I'm also going to repeat this in Spanish, so more folks can understand. Hola, mi nombre es Chelsea Dimas. Estoy corriendo para representante estatal para nuestro distrito, uh, quince. Um, estoy toma, tomando, or estoy invitando a toda la comunidad um, para celebrar la apertura de mi oficina oficial de mi campaña para representante. Um, sí estoy pidiendo que todos se registren, pero si quieren nomás venir así, está bien. Va a ser este sábado, uh, el diecisiete de febrero, uh, tres a cinco PM. Si saben dónde está la vaquerita, vamos a estar, uh, por la izquierda. Y va a haber, um, comida, um, momentos para co, um, conectar con comunidad y nomás va a ser un buen tiempo, so espero que todos puedan venir. Gracias, and thank you, everyone. Hope to see you all there.
Thank you, Ms. Dimas. All right, and I want to thank everybody for your comments. They are taken seriously, and honestly, we do not know what you're thinking until you tell us. And so it is valuable time for you to be able to stand up here and address council. And I don't know if you can see it from where you're sitting, but staff members and council members are furiously taking notes as you make your comments, so we do take this seriously, and if you left your number on here, we can contact you and let you know how progress is going. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Consent agenda consists of the following. Minutes, approve the minutes of the January twenty-two, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting. Approve the minutes of the February five, two thousand twenty-four workshop. Payroll vouchers, approve payroll vouchers numbered one one nine four four seven through one one nine four five one, and wire transfers as listed for seven hundred thirty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-eight dollars and eighty-seven cents for the period ending on January twenty-five, two thousand twenty-four. Claim vouchers, approve claim voucher numbers one zero eight three five nine through one zero eight three seven eight, and wire transfers as listed for one oh, one hundred six thousand, seven hundred thirty-nine dollars and fifty-nine cents for the period ending on December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three. Approve claim voucher numbers one zero eight three seven nine through one zero eight four one two, and wire transfers as listed for one million, one hundred eighty-two thousand, one hundred and seventy-one dollars and seventy-five cents for the period ending on January nineteen, two thousand twenty-four. Approve claim voucher numbers one zero eight four one three through one zero eight four six four, and wire transfers as listed for two hundred eighty-nine thousand, seven hundred seventy-one dollars and thirty-eight cents for the period ending on January twenty-six, two thousand twenty-four. Approve claim voucher numbers one zero eight four six five through one zero eight five one five, and wire transfers as listed for one million, seven, seven, yeah, I can get it out, seventy-seven thousand one hundred twenty-five dollars and eighty-seven cents for the period ending on February two, two thousand twenty-four. Council members, is there any item you'd like to pull for discussion? Ms. Ripley.
I'd like to pull, uh, some of the payroll vouchers.
You have numbers?
Um, I have the check numbers.
That will work.
Seven fifty-four, seven sixty-one, seven eighty, seven twenty-six, seven thirty. Those.
Okay. Very good. Any other members wish to pull?
Yes.
Fausto.
So I'd like to get some more clarification on one seven seven two two.
Is that one?
I'm hoping to have the right number. It's, uh, have the invoice number. Um, transaction six three zero, hope that helps. And the last one, clarification on one zero seven eight.
Very good. Anyone else? All right, Ms. Ripley, you've got some questions on check numbers. Um, go ahead.
Yes, all those payroll amounts are, are a lot more than they usually are. I'm not exactly certain. I wasn't able to go back and see how much, but for the payroll for one of them, for the payroll period from one eleven twenty-four to one twenty-five twenty-four, got paid seven thousand, three hundred fifty-eight. And, uh, there was another one that got paid six thousand, two hundred seventy-four. And, uh, they've never been that high. I was wondering if they, uh, if they comped out their vacation or, um, did they work at the Warming Center? Did they get paid for that? Is that what those are?
Madam City Manager.
I would have to research each and, um, every one of these for me to personally answer. I will defer to Jamison to see if she can answer, um, the questions for those check numbers. If not, we would like to do some research on those to get back to you if we don't have an answer tonight.
Disorder.
Um, seven fifty-four, that's the first one. It's the first one I've gotten a chance to look at, so it might take me a few minutes to look at the others. Um, he did do a vacation cash out per the contract that's allowed.
Okay.
So you can do one per year for up to forty-eight hours.
Okay. That's why that one was so hard.
What was the next one?
Uh, seven sixty-one.
Miss, uh, that individual is in our fire department, and he works a lot of overtime. Um, so actually, if you look back at some of his previous checks, I think they're routinely pretty close to that. And, I mean, um, he's, he's an individual that picks up a lot of overtime.
Okay, and then, uh, seven eighty?
Uh, this individual is working out of, um, he's, he's on a step up. He is working as a commander. He's a, a police sergeant that's working as a commander. I believe that amount is fairly consistent with what he has been getting paid for that step-up pay. So he's getting paid at the sergeant rate, and then he gets a differential because he's working as a police commander.
Okay. Seven twenty-six?
Seven twenty-six is another fire department, um, paramedic that works a significant amount of overtime.
Okay, and then seven thirty.
Is overtime? I, I, this is someone in our police department. Um, I believe it's just overtime. I can look into that more, more closely, but.
Okay, that's all.
I would think that the Warming Center would not have been reported on this one just yet. That happened pretty recently. Okay, Ms.
I don't believe any of those individuals had overtime associated with the Warming Center. I do actually have the numbers for those if anybody is interested.
Well, let's, uh, answer Ms. Fausto's, Ms. Ripley, has your question been answered? Okay, Ms. Fausto's question, Ms. Fausto, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, I just wanted clarification on, um, the spending of eleven thousand, five hundred and twenty-six for Mount for Animal Control. Uh, new patrol vehicles, I think that's pretty apparent, um, new, or new patrol vehicle printers and laptops. Um, that's one seven seven two two, uh, Mount for Animal Control. Uh, expenses again, eleven thousand, five hundred and twenty-six with seventy-seven cents.
One seven two two is the transaction number? Oh. Oh, there we go. Okay, I'm sorry, to CDW. Is that the one you're asking? CDW is the vendor?
One seven seven two two.
One seven seven two two.
Okay.
Sorry, five.
Um, so that invoice, yes, has quite a few things. It looks like, let me pull up that specific invoice for the eleven thousand. Um, I believe that all of that was for, um, computer, placement of computer in patrol vehicles and also in the new um, animal control vehicle so that she has, um, the ability to have her computer placed in there.
Thank you, Ms., uh, Horner. Uh, next one is, um, transaction number six three zero. Uh, it's a vestaltration reimbursement for Mr. Martin.
Uh, I, I don't, I'm not familiar with that transaction, but perhaps Trevor Martin.
Yeah. Um, yes, a, one of our code enforcement officer had a zipper on his, um, carrier replaced. And we got the, we got the zipper replaced on his carrier.
Okay. And those are usually listed under your name?
Yeah, for code enforcement, yeah.
Well, we have it listed as a reimbursement to you. Did you?
Yeah, 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 I did. I paid for it, um, out of pocket. Um, the, the, the business that was there either took, um, um, check or cash. They did not take cards, so I paid out, paid it out of cash that I had.
Understood. Okay. Thank you. And, uh, final one is, um, one zero seven eight, Apple Valley Interpreting Services, uh, in the amount of three thousand, nine hundred and twenty-four. It says it was canceled, so I'm just wondering what these services were for.
So when we schedule a trial in our, in our municipal court, we have to arrange for those interpreter services to be available. Um, and unfortunately, the attorneys can cancel those, those trials all the way up to the trial date, but we still have reserved the interpretation, um, and so that's what has happened.
Okay, but this transaction was canceled, so it didn't.
The trial was canceled.
Trial.
Still had to pay, we still had to pay for the interpreter.
Okay.
So basically, we arranged for the interpreter to be there, and we were required to pay for those services regardless of whether or not the, um, trial took place, which was canceled.
Understood. Okay, so those fees are under the three thousand forty, is it the one, one twenty?
Yes, that's correct.
And seven sixty-four? Okay.
The one twenty and the seven sixty-four are for regular interpretation services in their normal court, um, other invoices. The three thousand forty was the trial.
Okay.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank you for the clarification.
And answer your questions, Ms. Fausto?
Uh, it does.
All right, thank you. Okay, having these questions answered, uh, what is the desire of council on the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
A second.
And who was that, Ms. Fausto?
Sure.
All right, we've got a motion by Counselor Hart, second by Counselor Fausto, to approve the consent agenda as presented. Debate on this item? Hearing none. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. I too vote aye. Motion carries. Active agenda. Item A, temporary hiring freeze. Consider approving a resolution temporarily freezing the hiring of a recreational coordinator and technology support assistant. Mister Deputy Mayor, this is your item. You have the floor, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll start with the, the summary. This also recommends a temporary freezing of hiring for the positions of recreation coordinator and technology support assistants within the city of Sunnyside. The freeze aims to allow the city to assess its staffing requirements and financial allocations, ensuring the resources are optimal. Utilized in accordance with city priorities and goals. Um, so. Can I speak to the matter a little?
Absolutely. No, that, you're, you're essentially giving the staff report at this time, sir.
So. One of them is the, the recreation coordinator, um, back in two thousand twenty-three, I was in the audience and, and they brought it before council as, with a different name. Um, and council didn't approve of it, didn't, didn't want it, and I agree with it. We, we don't need it. The city. The city is not in the business of, of, of holding events, um, you know. We need to leave that to, to, to the outside organizations, um, you know, with, with. Rotary, with, uh, you know, with all these other organizations, you know, involved with these events. Um, the next one is the, the IT department. Uh, during the two thousand twenty-four budget hearing, I understand Ms. Horner said there was, uh, sixty-six service tickets per day. And my question to myself was, okay. There's sixty-six tickets per day, instead of hiring somebody new, can we figure out where these tickets come from? You know, if it's BP, you know, offenders, you may call it. Um, and instead of ha- hiring somebody new, let's, you know, maybe provide some retraining. Um, so there won't be so many, so many service tickets per day.
This is in IT, correct?
In IT, correct. Um, so that's, that's my reasoning for, for these, uh, freezes. You know, I think we need more, more information, more. You know, let's, let's research this a little bit more.
Council members, questions or comments for the Deputy Mayor? Mister Beeler.
Are these, uh, positions both currently empty?
Ms. Madam Matter, manager?
These positions have not been put out for, um, the public. Um, and I believe we were getting ready to do an internal job announcement, which, when this came forward, we put that on hold.
Are these both two new positions?
Um, yes.
Ever been filled?
Um, well, the recreation coordinator, um, has been filled in the past. And that was the only person that was actually employed at the, um, community center for many years. Um, we have went with a recreation supervisor now, um, in order to have a full-time receptionist, um, slash, you know, helper. Um, it was the direction of the previous council that recreation was a priority. So we have, um, taken that as one of the multiple times brought forward. That, um, recreation activities for our youth was a, um, absolute priority. So with that, we, um, looked at the recreation coordinator, coordinator and bringing that back. And this position would be there as, um, more of a, like, noon-to-eight position. Where they filled that evening slot where we don't have anyone in the community center and we rely solely on volunteers to monitor. Um, let's say pickleball or, um, our open gym. And it, it does create a liability for the city not having a city employee, um, in our building when we are open to the public. So we're hoping that this one, uh, position can also be there on weekends for, um, events that hold on the weekends. Um, and then also we're hoping to expand programming for the, uh, community center. And this would not be a position that had anything to do with city events or any, um, thing that goes on within the city. There may be opportunities for assistance, but it is more geared towards recreation. And Ms. Horner, would you like to say something?
I, based on the Deputy Mayor's comments, I believe that the position he actually wanted to have frozen was the, was the. Um, development coordinator position, which was the position that was more closely related to the previously proposed. Um, community program coordinator, or the special program coordinator. Um, not the recreation coordinator. So I think you may have just put the wrong, is it possible? Because the recreation, yeah, that's a Parks and Recreation job versus the community, uh, development technician position. Was the one that was going to do some of the business licensing and special event permits that we had proposed.
Which, that is fine, you know, in, in, in order to get these business permits, you know, you, you do need more help, um. It's just the recreation coordinator, I think we just need to look a lit, you know, look into a little bit more.
Okay, I apologize. I thought you may have just been confusing the one for the other because, um. The, the recreation coordinator was not asked for, well, it was asked for in budget of twenty-twenty-three. But it wasn't asked for at any other time during the year. Um, just that special, uh, special project coordinator was asked for, which is more closely related to the development technician.
Further questions or comments from council, Ms. Hart?
Um, as. Uh, going back to the fact that we have tried very, very hard in the last several years to reboot our recreation programs. Um, I think that I've, I've watched it over the years go from very, very, um. Vital and very strong and then go to absolutely nothing and we are now on the upswing. So having that extra person over there to work, to be there in the evenings so we can offer those evening programs. It was something that was discussed by the, the council and, uh, that was why it was in the budget. To have that person, um. Be able to hire that person. And I think, you know, as we're moving into the summer programs, we would definitely need to have somebody in addition to. The, uh, supervisor is her title supervisor, to have someone else there to, to be able to, um. Keep the doors open. It's, I think it's vital that we have this person on staff.
Uh, we're gonna give others a chance. First, Mister Beeler, anybody else with comments or questions on this item? Yes.
So I agree, Parks and Recs is a good thing. It's really good for youth and we should be doing more, more activities, more. More things during the summer, during the spring breaks, not just when there's a big special event. But I believe that more work should be put into that, that job setting. And I think, um, that we should wait and let's see. That the person who's in there right now, let's see her up and bring more activities. Let's see. I want more activities that can actually engage and bring in youth and not just specific targeted kids and ages. But I do want it to be open for more age, ages, especially the youth, because right now there's been a lot of. Conflict with ages and the specific age requirements in order to participate in some activities. So I do believe that we need to wait, let's see. It pick up some more, let's see more good outcomes and let's see and go from there.
Okay, other comments from council? Ms. Ripley?
So is there enough for all three of them to do during the winter? What, what exactly do they do during the winter?
So.
City manager.
During the winter is when they plan and, and there's a lot of planning that goes into your spring, summer and fall activities. Um, there are things that basically they can't get done during the summer because they just really are running their heads off. Between having the pool open, the splash pad open at the community center. Um, the recreation supervisor also coordinates with the museum and the senior center. So it's not just those activities, it is the activities at all the different locations that we have in Sunnyside. So really, the winter is for planning purposes, um, looking at future programming. Um, getting their flyers ready, getting their schedules ready. We also during the winter have a lot of, um, community center rentals. For private events, um, there is quite a bit of work that goes into getting those put on, um, just in paperwork. Um, and then also you have, um, the after, um, effect, which, um. There is cleanup of tables, cleanup of chairs, making sure that the facility is in the shape it was when it was rented. Um, there's all of those kind of things and they do want to expand their winter offerings, um, but again. You can only do what you can do. We would like to get someone that is a recreation coordinator that can get a Zumba class. I'd love to have a Zumba class here in Sunnyside. I used to go in Gramview, um, but it's not convenient for me anymore. Um, I think there's a lot of things like yoga, um, that we could be providing and I think people would come for things like that. Um, but again, it comes down to, um, if we have two staff that are there from eight to five. How are we gonna man the station, you know, the community center from five to, say, eight o'clock? Um, and, and offer programming. So this person would fill in that gap. Um, the other thing, I'm not sure if anyone is aware, but on Saturday, Ms. Sunnyside had a senior citizen dance for Valentine's Day at the senior center. Um, our staff was not there because that was their day off. In this case, we could schedule that recreation coordinator to be there to assist with anything that's needed. Um, because, you know, it is the city's building and I think that we need to, to take ownership and help in those situations. At least have a staff member available.
Further staff question to comment, Ms. Fausto?
Um, yeah, I'll go ahead and chime in. Um, I think, uh, look, uh, I, I ran my, my campaign on, on making sure that we develop more programs for youth. It's imperative to continue engaging our youth in our community. Um, however, from a human resource background, I hesitate to throw more money to a position where we actually don't really have a breakdown of what we need. I would hate to put more, to create this job position and we actually haven't prioritized onboarding. Uh, we had a conversation with, uh, City Manager Alba and there are statistics that say that our employees will only be as successful as how, as, as the onboarding experience. Um, I, I do believe that Ms. Ramirez, who is working over at Parks and Recs, who's currently our director. Uh, needs, uh. Maybe a little bit more, or maybe there is a conversation needed with Ms. Ramirez to figure out what the direction of Parks and Recs is going. Um, I want this to be outlined. I want this to be clear. I want this to be concise. Um, otherwise, we're throwing money into another position that we are setting up for failure rather than success. And maybe this is information that I'm missing. However, again, this is a temporary freeze, just as the language states on this resolution. Um, and I am at an absence or of, of information. I am at a deficit for information. And I would actually wanna have more conversation around what is our expectation and how we're gonna, how we are going to ensure that the next person we bring in is going to be successful and the programming is going to be what our, our youth actually needs.
Thank you. All right, Madam City Manager, yes.
Um, I would just like to remind council, um, and I know this sometimes isn't nice to hear. But I am the hiring-firing authority and I am the person sitting in the hot seat when it comes to positions. And if you read the RCW on my role, it is my role to direct and hire staff.
I'm clear about that, City Manager.
And I just wanna make sure that that is, is, is clear because when you say you want more information on, um, a, a job description and all of that, that almost sounds like surrapping my position. And so I just wanted to make that clear.
Well, that's clear. And you take her, uh, direction from council.
As a whole.
As a whole, correct. And I am here representing my position. So if I want more information on how we, we control the budget or we run the budget and we help allocate these funds. Um, I want to be clear on where we are investing our finances. And I want the positions that we create, the ones that you hire for, I want them to be successful. And I think that's where we can connect and find common ground. I totally understand that you're the one that hires, that you are the one that gives direction to our staff. However, we have every right to ask for transparency in the decisions that you make.
And, and I totally agree and I have been very transparent in, in my opinion. Um, and, and as far as the budget goes, the council does adopt the budget as presented. But then it is my job to manage the budget.
And that, and that was going to be my response as well. Um, council needs to remember that, yes, we do an awful lot of work in, in preparing and understanding and getting ready for the budget. We adopt the budget, we approve it. But once it's approved, the budget belongs to the manager and she is the one who is in charge of spending. She's the one in charge of hiring and firing and all of that. As she just said, we can ask for information all day long. Absolutely, that is within our right. It's our responsibility. If there's anything we don't understand, just like on the consent agenda, bring that forward, please. Um. We need to make sure that is clarified for everybody and that all of us as council members understand what's going on. At any time, we can ask to see the budget and, and go over either with the manager or I believe Ms. Horner has indicated that she is more than happy to go over stuff as well as her time permits. But we need to do, do need to remember that the manager, or the manager does actually own the budget for this year at this point. And so that's, that's where the concern is here. So, Mister Beeler, I believe you had a question?
You already brought it up. I was just gonna bring up the youth and why we, uh, opted to do this.
Okay. Further questions from council members? Ms. Hart?
Um, as I, as I recall, when the budget was passed in December, uh, with the inclusion of the, uh, recreation, uh, coordinators. Was this being described and also for the, uh, techni- technology support assistant. As I understood it, just not being a part of the budget process this year, but listening to the hearings. Um, both of those things had been well thought out, had the research had been done on why we needed to have uh, extra support there in the techno- the IT program, um. There's a lot of things that go on in the background we're not aware of. It makes, uh, IT the, the work for this community. And if they're, if, you know, there, there's a lot going on there. So I, I, and it's already been budgeted for. It hasn't been, uh, the, but the, uh, um, job hiring list hasn't gone out. And, and I understood the city manager to say that it would be offered in-house first, which I think was a concern of Deputy Mayor. Um, Gavon, and I think that, uh, there is budget. It's one of the wherestas for the temporary freeze, uh, for certain positions being necessary due to budgetary cons- uh, considerations. Operational restructuring and other, uh, organizational administrative reasons. I don't, I think all of those things have already been addressed. They were addressed prior to the budget being, um, adopted. So I think at this point, uh, a hiring freeze on the, on the budget as adopted. Um, I think is, is not nee- not needed at this point.
Ms. Vasquez?
I would have to agree with Counselor Fausto. I believe that we can do a lot better things with this money that has already been budgeted for. And I understand that it's, that it has already been budgeted for. However, this is why we are. I mean, the freeze would be a really good idea because. Honestly, at the end of the day, we're, we are all here as council to serve our community. And a lot of community members have had a lot of questions. So, and I understand, City Manager Alba, that you do all the hiring. However, it is our job to ask these questions and I do believe that onboarding should be a lot more smoother and should be offered to every department head at all times and for all of them to also be updated with all of their ACW, AWC trainings.
Thank you. Mister Riley?
Uh, I apologize for the interruption. I just wanna offer a point of information real quick.
I was gonna turn it over to you next anyway, so you're right on track.
Uh, so the city council and the mayor, as a, a code city, have the ability to do hiring freezes as they see fit. Um, going forward for prospective budgets coming up. They also do have the ability to freeze positions that were prior approved by a budget and set for that have not been filled yet. However, in order for that to happen, there either needs to be a secondary, um, uh, resolution or an amendment to this resolution which states that they're amending the previously approved budget from the prior year to freeze a specific position to do that. If that's what's being considered. Otherwise, it won't have an effect on the prior approved positions for the budget. So if that's the intention of, of this resolution, then there probably needs to be some sort of amendment to this language or else a secondary resolution which amends the prior year's approved budget for these positions, if that's the intention.
So what he's saying is we need to do a budget amendment before we can carry this one forward, as I under-
Or if you do them simultaneously in this situation as well.
Okay, well. Go ahead, Mr. Gavon.
I mean, the reason I didn't do a, a, a budget amendment is because it's, I want this to be a temporary, so we can have that discussion. I mean, I could, you know, propose an ordinance to the, uh, uh, budget amendment and that would completely take them off the table. Which not something a, a hundred percent, you know, I, I think it's more needed to. where to be the freeze and have the, have this conversation. Um, you know, with Parks and Recs and 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 council members, you know, and then, you know, and new council, that's, that's also, you know, that just got voted in. So, I mean, I could do a, an amendment, uh, ordinance, but it's gonna completely take it off the table.
We, we want to make sure we affect your intention with this. You understand what I'm saying? And so you want to make sure that if you want to have perspective, uh, budgetary freeze, you can do that immediately with this, what this says here. If you want to freeze prior approved, approved positions that have not been filled yet, you just have to amend the prior year's budget to include that.
Okay.
So.
Ms. Horner, would you like to speak?
Go ahead, Ms. Horner.
I, I just want to take a brief moment and I, I understand, I believe, the intention of the council with wanting to have some additional information on the development of the position and the specific goals with each of the individual positions. And I actually have no problem uh, providing that to the council within the next month or so. Um, just so you're aware, timeline wise, I'm not necessarily sure that this is necessary. Because these positions haven't even been posted yet. And so it does take a while to go through the recruitment process. And if you would like to just ask us to hold off on posting these positions, I think that that's something that we can easily do while we work to provide you with that information. Um, but I also wanted to remind council that we do budget for every position to be fully um, to be fully in place for the entire year. So every one of these two week periods that we don't have somebody in the position is savings basically to the budget. Um, and that goes for all of the other full-time positions that the city has because of the way that we budget. So the city has a hundred and forty-three full-time positions budgeted. Um, but even right now, I believe we have twenty-seven open positions. So each one of those open positions, when you think about the bottom line on the budget and the, the backend of that is actually not gonna get spent in that way. Um, and so that, that's the way that we budget, by budgeting for that full salary, that full annual salary for each position instead of prorating, um, to a particular month or something.
So that means an empty seat is not being paid. We have the position on the books, but there's nobody in it. We're not paying anybody. Go ahead, Mr. Gavon.
So if we ask you to hold on, on hiring on these positions, you know, what's gonna be the guarantee that they, you guys don't hire?
Madam Manager?
I take my direction from city council as a whole. If city council as a whole votes to, uh, postpone a s- a position hiring until, say, March first or April first, you give me a date, I will honor that.
So do we need to approve this resolution with the, with the date?
We don't have a motion. We don't have, I mean, we've got this before us, um, and it is yours, sir. And so what, what do you wish to do with this?
I'm going to approve.
You want to prove it as is? Okay. So, before we go a few further, uh, we've got a motion on the floor. Um, I haven't asked if all, all the questions are finished yet, but I'm not seeing a lot of hands up in the air at this point either. So Mr. Gav- Mr. Gavon has made a motion to approve this resolution as it stands. And so I believe it was beginning here, the beginning of a second.
Yes, I second.
Okay, Ms. Vasquez? All right. So we've got a motion to approve a resolution temporarily freezing the hiring of a recreational coordinator and technology support assistant. And is there debate on this item? Ms. Hart?
Again, as, as I'm understanding it, the, the city manager has, uh, already put kind of a stop on posting of these positions. And as the finance director, uh, said, the, the money is just sitting there. So it's not going anywhere. We're not spending it. Of all we, really, all we really probably need to do is to say to the city manager, well, let's just hold off on hiring these people until some of the questions that were asked tonight regarding those positions can be answered more fully. So I don't really think that, um, I kind of think that we're, don't need to have an actual freeze. We could just direct the city manager to say, let's just not post those jobs yet. Let's see, let's find out if we can find a little bit more about what their jobs are going to be, what, what the position and duties are going to be, because I think that's of some concern. Um, so I, I, I would, I would, uh, vote to, to just, um, not approve this, this particular resolution.
Thank you. I saw another hand out. Mr. Beeler?
Um, the problem I have is this is a temporary hiring freeze. I know what he, what he, what he wants to do here. But what do we do after that? There's no time period. There's no, let's do this to either pick up the freeze or leave the freeze. This is just freezing it. This is not doing anything for us. And there's no way, um, I don't know where we're supposed to go from here.
I think the method would be we'd have to have another resolution to lift the hiring freeze.
All right, what's gonna happen between now and that? I mean, what's the goal?
That's Mr. Gavon's motion and so.
Yeah, what, what's the goal there? Are we gonna have?
Let's have a, let's have a conversation. Let's have meetings.
I mean, who do you want to have a meeting with?
Department head in Parks and Recs and city manager, mayor, you know, Ms. Horner.
And who do you want else in this meeting?
I mean, I know we can't have more than, you know, four, be a corner, maybe you could have a workshop, put on the workshop.
Okay. You got other, Ms. Rostow, you look like you're ready to-
No, I was just gonna say, could we bring it to a workshop?
You can do that, yes. And we can do it without this resolution as well. Other questions or debate items? All right, we have a motion on the floor, motion and seconded. Once again, to approve a resolution temporarily freezing the hiring of a recreational coordinator and technology support assistant. All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna ask for a roll call vote because it's a little bit vague on the numbers here. Mr. Beeler? Ms. Vasquez?
Yes.
Ms. Ripley?
Yes.
Ms. Rostow?
Yes.
Mr. Gavon?
Yes.
Ms. Hart?
No.
And I two vote no, the motion passes. All right, now consulting with legal, Mr. Riley. We have this motion. You indicated that we have to do a budget amendment in order to make this work. Is that correct?
If you want to affect, um, a position that was approved and funded at the last year's budget that was approved by the city council, you would have to amend that budget then to put a freeze on that hiring position as well.
Okay. And what is our recommendation, recommendation for that? Um, do we have to make a motion for the budget amendment and for a mouth, correct?
You can do that on the record, yes. Or, and, and the, the problem is I don't know the line item on how it was approved last year and I couldn't tell you. That would have to be specified.
Mm-hmm. So unless we do a budget amendment, is this resolution kind of ineffective until we get that done?
It's effective as to prospective budgeting and hiring for coming up positions based on that. Now, whether it affects previously approved or not, without a budget amendment, it kind of doesn't. And so that's the issue.
Okay.
So you, you can make that on the record if you choose to do so, but you need to be specific on how you do it.
That's correct. And we don't have the specifics at this time.
I don't, so.
And I'm not sure if Ms. Horner can pull that up and give us the numbers or?
Um, I, the I, IT position is split out. It would be impossible for me to, um, give you that information unfortunately tonight. And I think based on what the city manager said, that we're fine just sitting on this without a budget amendment. Uh, to me personally, for my job and reporting purposes to the state, it would be much easier if we did not just do a budget amendment, um, by a vote in open council like that. Without an actual prepared amendment.
Okay, so.
Sending it back. Ms, Mr.-
Go ahead, Ms. Hart.
Are we sending it back then to staff, then to develop that budget amendment? Not make it part of this tonight's resolution passage, but have a go back to staff, have those numbers brought forward again, then make the amendment from there to look at it our next council meeting?
You can do an advisory motion that way, yes. And then it would have to be coupled with a secondary resolution to approve that amendment.
Okay, I, I would suggest we do that.
Okay, then I will ask Mr. Galvane, since this was your resolution, if you would work with Ms. Horner and, and get that all in the appropriate language and along with the city manager. And bring that before our next regular meeting. That would be appreciated. Item B. Salgado property annexation. Consider approving a resolution to begin the annexation of the Salgado property. Madam City Manager?
I will defer to, uh, Community and Economic Development Director Martin.
Mr. Martin?
Good evening, City Council. Um, before you tonight, I have the first step in an annexation process. Um, I hope you're all familiar with this. We've done a couple of these last year. Um, so what I have before you is an application that was submitted by Hector Hector Salgado, who owns a piece of property at twelve seventy Washout Road, approximately five acres in size. Um, he is, has submitted an application to the city of Sunnyside, wishing to annex his um, property into, uh, the city limits. So the goal here, if, if, if city council approves this tonight, the application will then be forwarded on to our planning commission to talk about um, how we plan to bring in the property, what the zoning would be. And then, once, once they come to a, a conclusion, come back to council and then forward it on to the boundary review board for its final processing steps. So this is kind of just step one in this process. I'm here to answer any questions for you.
Okay, questions for Mr. Martin? Ms. Ripley?
Did I read that, uh, they wanted to put eleven single units there?
Um, potentially. I think that's the, the end goal is to develop some housing on this site. Yeah, it's, it's about five, five acres in size. So I think
Five acres?
Mm-hmm. I think eleven units would fit here pretty, pretty well.
Uh-huh.
Mr. Beeler?
Sewer and water available at the site?
Yes, yep, yep. So sewer is located on the east side of the site. Um, they would have, probably have to bring an easement, bringing that sewer out to Washout Road. And then water is located at the, kind of the southwest end of the parcel, right at the end of city limits, right there. It, it ends right at the, at the north side of the school.
Ms. Rostow?
Yes, um, uh, I thank you for clarifying. This is the first step. I don't know if this comes back to council or not. Uh, thanks for the clarification. Um, I was hoping it would if this does get passed today. Um, I, I have some questions. I don't know if you have the answers to it. It's okay if you don't. Um, going off of Council Ripley's question, there's eleven units. Did Mr. Salgado indicate at all, um, if these units would be affordable housing? Um, bring, be, uh, being brought into, into our community?
Um, there's no indication on the, the, the affordability standpoint at this point in time. Um, I'm sure that's gonna be something that he'll develop later on, but as of this point in time, um, there's, since there's no project that's necessarily developed, I don't think that they've come to that that conclusion yet of what's with the market rate for these things, what these units will be.
Okay, thank you. And I just want to put it on the record that I'm very passionate about bringing in affordability into our community. If it does benefit, benefit the community. Um, it's something that we definitely need to have more discussion on, given that according to the census, we do live in a community where households are, um, uh, going by fifty, about less than fifty thousand, I think, average house- household income, uh, here in Sunnyside alone. So just want to make sure that we have that in consideration. I wanted to put it on record as well.
Hey, uh, Mr. Deputy Mayor?
I just need a little bit of, uh, clarification. I know on this application it says eleven units, but I also found a permit that the county's, uh, granted to him for a fifty by twenty-four foot, uh, detached garage. And it looks like he's running a business up there?
For the record, just to interrupt your quickness, hard of stepping up for just a moment, but.
Do we wait?
No, you go ahead.
Okay. Um, so is, is, I'm just, you know, some clarification there, because it does look like he's running a business right now.
Um, if he's running a business at this site, and I would expect upon annexation that that would be cleaned, that would be redeveloped and cleaned up. Um, I know that there, I believe there's also a unit on the parcel as well. If there's a business in the county, the city has no jurisdiction on that right now. Once it is in the city, we would work with the, with the applicant, the property owner to clean that up and and, uh, better manage that, that asset on the property.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Mr. Beeler, I'm sorry, Ms. Vasquez, you had your hand up first.
Yeah, I would just like to put on the record for transparency reasons that I do know the owners, they were my former bosses. However, I am able to vote without being biased.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Beeler?
It also says a multifamily zone. That's not individual houses.
Um, let's see here, multifamily zone.
Why is the annexation being requested for multifamily zone and residential is what it says?
Um, that may just be the way it was written on the application. It's gonna go before planning commission to determine the final outcome of what, what type of zoning that'll go, it'll go under. Um, um, there could be a possibility that it's brought in as medium density residential, would allow, which would allow something like duplexes. It's certainly a big enough parcel where um, there, there can be further ideas explored and not just single family units, so.
That would be the only one out there on sixteen, right next to the two schools and the church.
Just an interruption, getting Ms. Hart is back in the meeting.
Um, yes, yeah, that would be, um, the only residential on the, on the north side of the city right there at that point in time. Yeah, so there, I'm sure there's would be some some very thoughtful discussion with the planning commission on how to bring it into the city.
Further questions or comments? Hearing none. What is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve.
Hey, we've got a motion on the floor. If there's not a second, motion dies. All right. We've got a motion by Councilor Hart, second by Councilor Beeler, to approve a resolution to begin the annexation of the Salgado properties. There debate on this item?
Well, we have a good planning commission, so they'll, they'll cover all these questions before it comes back.
May, may I-
Correct, Mr. Martin.
Interrupt you for one more, one more second. So this is just the first step in the process. So it'll go to planning commission and then come back to city council to then forward it on to the boundary review board. Once the boundary review board has done their review, it'll come back to city council for one more final, final decision. So you will see it at least two more times before it becomes a part of the city.
Good, Mr. Beeler?
Well, we find out what they're gonna do with it. That's just for annexing that.
Yeah, that, so that comes at the project phase. Um, so once, once the project, once the parcel is brought into the city, then we go move the next into what's called generally the project phase. And they would submit applications for, that would, that would be during that, that phase, yeah.
Would that also go back to the planning commission?
It depends how it's brought into the city. If it's brought into the city as something like a planned unit development, then yes. If it's brought into the city as residential, then maybe. It just depends what the proposal is. If it's, if they bring it into the city as an R1 or like a low density and they want to do single family homes, no, it's just a permitted use, then they'll just move forward.
Further debate? Hearing none. All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. I two vote aye, motion carries. Item C. Declare decommissioned ambulance as surplus. Consider approving a resolution declaring a decommissioned ambulance as surplus. Madam City Manager?
I will turn this over to Fire Chief Hubrick.
Chief Hubrick?
Thank you, council. Uh, just at this point in time, we do have a, uh, an ambulance that has been decommissioned, has no longer been serviced, hasn't been in service for some time due to some catastrophic engine failure. Um, which, uh, we do have the replacement that's due to arrive here in the next couple of weeks. Um, at this point, the unit's just sitting in the, uh, public works yard. Um, I don't want it to sit there and rot, if you will. Um, so just requesting for permission to surplus the vehicle to make it available for sale for an individual who will do with it what they will.
All right, questions for the chief?
Yes.
How many times have we used that remount box?
It is currently on its second remount, depending on who you ask. It could potentially be remounted a third time. But again, it depends on which emergency vehicle technician you ask.
And it would have to go on a two-wheel drive.
That is correct, sir. It'd have to go on a light body, which is a Ford Econoline two-wheel drive chassis, yes.
Okay, further questions? Mr. Deputy Mayor?
Plan on taking it to, uh, auction or you already have somebody in mind that's looking to buy it?
So I have a couple of different options. Um, but I, due to the, uh, the minimus value of it, I wouldn't necessarily want to pay auction fees or broker fees if we don't have to, because again, it's, it's, there's just not a lot of value at this point. Um, so really my first choice would be to try and sell it directly, but if we didn't get any interest in.
Um, if I might just interrupt, I have a little bit of an answer for that question, but, um, Brol and I have been working together and getting a inventory of current surplus items for the city throughout the city. And we're hoping to have a, a public auction sometime in April is, is the goal. So that might be able to fall into that.
Okay, brilliant. I like the sound of that, well.
Further questions? All right, so we have a question before us. What is the desire of council on this item?
Move to approve the resolution. Move to approve the resolution of surplusing and decommissioning the ambulants.
I second.
All right, well. Let the deputy mayor second at this one. So we have a motion by Counselor Beeler, second by the Deputy Mayor, to approve a resolution declaring a decommissioned ambulance as surplus. Is there debate on this item? Hearing none. All in favor of this motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, no? I too vote aye. Motion carries.
Very good.
Items from Councilmember, Mayor's appointments for boards and commissions. I have not seen any applications at this point, and since Clerk Renteria is not with us this evening, I don't know. You have any? You don't have any information on it? Okay, so that we'll carry that forward to the next meeting. If you know of anybody who wants to apply for a vacant position, please help them find those applications on the city website or print one out and give it to them and make sure that it gets turned into City Hall to myself or to a member of the Rules Committee. We will be happy to review that and move forward with that. Item B, other reports, announcements, and or questions by council. And as usual, I'm going to start on the far end there, Mr. Beeler.
I have nothing to report.
All right, Ms. Vasquez.
Yes, well, Chief, Chief Lehman's not here, but I wanted to thank him in advance. I wanted to thank him for inviting us to go visit the crime lab. We were able to go and it was a really amazing experience. I got to see the the building and everything that they do inside, and it was just super nice to know that a lot of our communities cities came together in order to make this possible. I also attended YV Cogs newly city officials. What was it, a celebration? And it was really fun, and I learned a lot there, too, and I was able to network and meet a lot of people and just be able to speak highly of Sunnyside, the residents, and all the new things and goals that we have and set and stone for. So that was really exciting. And I also wanted to, I also wanted to just bring up RCW that I think is super important, and that way we could just go forward and move forward with this. So it's RCW forty two point thirty point one ten, and it's under let me see, it is under my wifi's been acting up today on my on my tablet. But actually, it's RCW, sorry, it just, it was a different one, RCW thirty five eight point thirteen point zero eighty. And it's the City Manager's Power and Duties. And number seven, it says to keep the council fully advised of the financial condition of the code, city, and its future needs. So I know we are all nearly, well, I'm nearly elected, so I would really like to just know more about the budgets, health, and always stay up to date with that, since that is a duty of our city manager. And I also saw in the email that came in that city manager would be taking a a vacation, right? Uh, so I hope you have a good vacation, and I believe it's your birthday, right? It'll be coming up if I'm correct. So happy early birthday.
Ms. Ripley.
Okay. Counsel, I along with Deputy Mayor Galvin, bring this resolution in front of you for consideration. I move to suspend the rules. I've got some paperwork that I want to hand out.
Hey, counsel, is there any objection to suspending the rules from, I mean, which rules do you wish to suspend, Ms. Ripley? All of them?
All of them.
So, okay, um, I guess I'm a little bit confused what what the goal of this is, um.
Maybe if, Mr. Mayor.
Miss Hart?
Can we maybe before you start passing it out, maybe kind of give us an idea what it is that you're maybe there's, maybe we need to bring it at a different time. Are you just trying to let us know about it, or?
Well, it sounds like you've got a resolution before us, and you moved to suspend the rules. Is that your resolution?
Yes.
Okay.
A second.
Please explain.
Hand out paperwork. You want to just pass it down?
Sure. I'll say, I'm sorry.
Please understand our confusion, Ms. Ripley. It's a little bit unusual to go about it this this way, so.
Yes, well, this is my first time.
Do we have one for the city attorney?
Yes. Here, Ben.
And one for the deputy clerk?
I got her.
Okay, you got it. Does everybody have a copy? All right.
Yes.
Carry on, please, Ms. Ripley.
Okay, counsel, you see the resolution in front of you in regards to Elizabeth Alba, our city manager. On January eighth, three new council members and one returning council member were sworn in. We are getting a younger generation on council, new council, new ideas. For the best interest of the city, the council is determined to seek a new city manager. That is what this resolution is about. I move to adopt the resolution removing the city manager, terminating the city manager's employment agreement without cause and providing the severance pay pursuant to the employment agreement.
Questions or comments for Ms. Ripley?
My question is, is this the right, is this, is this the right place to be doing this? During during um comments from council people and does that say here?
Answer your question, Ms. Hardest. Yeah, actually, it is. Um, this is the time when council members have the opportunity to speak and to bring things forward. So yes, this is, this is the indicated time to do so. Further questions or comments? I find this kind of unusual, uh, counsel. I don't know other questions or comments. I'm going to speak up. She has just received one of the highest evaluations at any city manager in the history of Sunnyside has ever received. As far as complying with the wishes of council, so this this one kind of takes me by surprise. And so, um, I understand that you said without cause. I'm curious as to what is the reasoning?
There's been a lot of questions and uh no answers. And um I'm sorry, I don't trust our financial health at this moment.
Very well. Other questions or comments from council?
I have something.
Mr. Deputy Mayor.
So I've I've said it from the get go. I work, you know, with the city manager and going forward, you know, I that I didn't agree before that we be switching city city managers, you know, every two to three years, but uh, quite honestly, I don't think we have the same priorities going forward.
Have you? Other questions or comments from council? Ms. Hart?
Well, I I'm in disagreement with this particular resolution. As as the mayor said, this, uh, we have had the highest ratings um of any city manager that we've had in the past, uh, let's just say ten years. We've had, uh, our audits have been good. We've got no findings for the first time in about, it's been now fourteen years, I believe. And I I just think this is a to to say without cause, there's got to be a reason why you think that we should remove her from office. I I'm firmly against this. I think that this, the city manager we have now has shown to be innovative, has shown to be open and transparent. And when there are questions, if there's an answer that could be found, she finds it and can let you know about it immediately. I just, I just think this is is not a valid reason for letting her go. I I don't understand the reason for letting her go. You don't have one. I don't feel like you have one, just to say at will, at cause. I just, I just think that the financial health of our of our budgets and our have been, we have been listening. We've got, everything is in balance. I don't know where the idea keeps coming up. I keep hearing about some two million dollars missing. There would, there's no way two million dollars is missing. There's just not. And we, you know, I I just think that whatever the reasoning is here, it's, it's, I just, I just find it just unacceptable.
Ms. Vasquez.
It is without cause, so I believe that no reasoning is needed.
That is correct. The council can can move in that direction. Any other comments? I personally feel that this would be a foolish move. Our city manager is the envy of other cities in the state, not just in the valley, but in the state. We've heard nothing but good things about her from other entities with whom she has worked. She was the one who, as a financial director, got us on the road to financial solvency. When I got on council in two thousand thirteen, our finances were a bit of a mess. Just to understate it dramatically, uh, we've talked quite a bit about parks and rec and activities. We didn't have parks and rec because that position was not filled. We had nothing going on for our youth. We had issues with funding in the police department. We had personnel issues in the police department, all sorts of things. And in other departments of the cities as well. It's just the police department popped on the top of my mind. But she brought our budget in the line. As has been mentioned, we haven't had any findings. That's been amazing. She's brought on top notch personnel who are making things happen in the best way. If you look long term, it's some of the best stuff that we've seen happening as we plan for the future. Uh, when I first sat down with Ms. Alba as city manager, each of us had the opportunity to share our goals and visions of the city with her. And she was thinking twenty, thirty years in the future, planning ahead, lining things up. Okay, how can we build this up so that as we go, we've got the infrastructure in place, we've got the planning in place so that we're ready to go when this happens, when it inevitably happens, whatever it is. And she's proven to be a visionary, and I very much have I've got a great deal of confidence in her, and I'm I'm just kind of kind of surprised by this. So that's that's my take on this. Honestly, I feel it would be a very wrong move to make to make this move at this point. I like I said, we've just given her a very high uh review. And this is just seems like a very strange, strange way to follow that up, so. Other comments?
Well, I move to approve the resolution to remove Elizabeth Alba from position of city manager.
First. Vote on that.
Ms. Ripley did. Counselor Ripley.
That voted and approved?
No.
No.
We had not approved that. She she, you are correct, sir. Thank you for that point of order. Let me write that down a minute. All right, so we've got, um, do we have a motion to suspend the rules?
I move to suspend the rules.
I second.
Okay, we've got a motion to suspend the rules. Is there debate on this item? Hearing none. All in favor, go ahead.
Yes, I do. I I just feel like we're just doing something that's going to shoot us in the foot. I think that we're going out and looking for a new city manager is a just a horrendous process, which a lot of you haven't done, and going through that is is really excruciating. It costs an awful lot of money. We were able to hire Ms. Alba as our city manager because she had all the experience that was necessary. She already knew what was going on wrong. She was trying to work on getting it fixed, giving her the leeway to do it. She got things done. She gets things done. And I just think that this is this 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 particular, uh, we're talking about suspending the rules. I don't think we should be spend dispensing, just suspending the rules in order to 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 take this action. I I'm just totally against that.
Further debate on this item? Okay, we got a motion on the floor to suspend the rules. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no?
No.
I too vote no. Motion carries. All right, so we've had this motion to suspend the rules. Now we have the motion before us that can be moved.
I move to approve the resol- the resolution to remove Elizabeth Alba from position of city manager.
I second.
Okay, I'm taking notes here, so hang on. Okay, we've got a motion before us to remove the city manager from her position, second, uh, made by Counselor Vasquez, second by Deputy Mayor Galvin. Debate on this item? Go ahead, Ms. Hart.
I just, I can't reiterate enough that this this is just a shoot yourself in the foot situation to remove a city manager who has brought nothing but accolades to the community. If without her, we wouldn't be able to get rid of the months in property, without her calling that surplus, without without her here rebuilding from scratch, the Parks and Recreation Program. From scratch, being able to get a department, police department, that is in unity and and is working as a functioning unit, the same with the fire department, getting the fire department to work in a unit. And having the having the foresight to say we needed to have somebody as a community development director that takes on all of those things that fall into that particular category. This is vision, visionary. It doesn't suit everybody because nobody likes change, but I got to tell you, she has done more for this city in the time that she's been city manager than the past twenty years of city managers who were set on their thumbs, uh, city managers. And I just, I just think this is a wrong, wrong move. Thank you.
Further debate? I would have to agree with Ms. Hart on this one. I think this is a move that we would come to regret rather quickly. Um, again, referring to the accolades from all over the state, but also she has come in, this is the third city manager who I have worked with in my time in council. She came in knowing the culture of our community. She knows the culture of the valley. She speaks our language. Yes, she has made some changes. And I think those changes are going to play out in the positive. She has perfectly worked with council in the past. And as council, we've been very satisfied with the work she has done. And that continues to come out in her evaluations. So I am personally quite disturbed that we're going in, that we've been talking about this. This really bothers me. Um, it's going to throw us into chaos. We've talked about saving money in in one area or another. This is, this is expensive. This, I mean, she, Ms. Ms. Alba is the third manager I've worked with, which means I've participated in hiring three different managers, and it is an expensive process. And then you've got to break them into the city. If they come from out of the state, they've got to learn the RCWs, they've got to learn the municipal codes. They have to learn everything that goes with that. We've had two managers prior to this who did not do a very good job of learning the RCWs or city codes or involve themselves very well in the community, to be honest with you. And here we have somebody who knows this city. And we're going to throw that opportunity away? In my mind, it feels absurd.
Mayor, if I may be allowed to speak, I know this is not normal to allow me to speak.
You may speak. As we suspended the rules.
So it's very disappointing to have this come before me. And out of the clear blue, unexpected. Not only have I been a member of this community, I was born in the hospital here in Sunnyside. I've lived here my entire life. I have worked for city governments for almost twenty four years. I have put my neck out numerous times. I have said to myself, what can I do to make things better? And that's always been my attitude. And as many of you know, I've had a really rough time in January. I watched my daughter in the hospital after losing everything they owned in their apartment. This last weekend, she brought two cats and two dogs to my house to be buried. And now you're going to relieve me of my duties. And make me go to another community to live because that's the only way I can get another job is by moving away from Sunnyside. I have invested my life in this community. I have worked weekends, nights. I have been in my office, I can't tell you the number of times all weekend. I have staff members that tell me, and it happened just last week, if you're not the city manager anymore, I'm looking for another job. Not only will you lose me, you'll begin to lose the people that support me. And that is a very vast majority of my staff. I will not put a burden on them to say to you any of that. But I do hope that they reach out to you in private if you make this decision and tell you how much they value me as a supervisor. I can get another job. I can move away from here. But think about what's going on. And I really don't like it when people are laughed at and people are mocked. And I really don't like device and divided communities. And I think that this is being divided on race. And I think that this is being divided on race. Well, I, I am be giving my opinion. I'm giving my opinion, which I am allowed to do. I have heard the word race more times in the last month than I have in the entire time I've worked for the cities that I've worked in. And I am so, uh, excuse me. I am so disappointed. That I have not lived up to. For council members' expectations. So with this vote. And the decision you make. I wish you the best. And I do hope that Sunnyside is able to move on and do something good. And that's all I have to say.
Further debate on this item. Hearing none, we have a motion. The motion again is to remove the city manager from her position. All in favor of this motion, please signify by, I'm gonna do a roll call vote. I'm sorry, just to make sure there's no ambiguity here, Mr. Beeler. Okay, I'm taking notes as I go, so be, be patient. Ms. Vasquez?
Yes.
Ms. Ripley?
Yes.
Ms. Rousto?
Yes.
Mr. Galvan?
Yes.
Ms. Hart?
No.
And I two vote no. If I could vote more emphatically no, I would. Motion carries.
May I be excused?
Yes, Madam City Manager, you may be excused. I really think this was a bad decision.
This is a bad, bad thing.
Alright, moving on with the agenda. Um, we've gotten up to Ms. Ripley, Ms. Rousto, you have. Reports, announcements, and your questions?
I have none.
Mr. Galvan?
I have none.
Ms. Hart?
I just wanna say for the record that I think you guys are, are just. Oh, this is just horrifying to me. I, I just can't even wrap my head around it. That you would hide, you would just randomly decide without any forethought at all. To, to dismiss the city manager who's done so much for this community. I, that. That being said, I did have some nice things I wanted to say tonight. And, and now I'm just so disappointed, I can't even. Can't even square it away with my. Thought process, but I do wanna say a couple of things. This past weekend. Um, I had the misfortune of falling on, uh, tripping over my own feet. And I fell and, uh, the EMTs who were on duty Saturday morning arrived quickly. Professionally, they came and they helped me, they lifted me up like I was no heavier than a feather, which. Uh, just looking at me, you know, that's not true, but they got me up and stood there and made sure that I was coherent and. And was not suffering any, uh. Vertigo or anything like that, you know, but they did a great job and I just wanna count that to their training. And to the, uh, uh, cohesiveness that's going on in your, in your department chief. And I just think that that is a good, a good indication of the kind of work that goes on in our departments all the way across the board. And I, um, gotta say that. I, I can't remember what else I want to say, so I'm just gonna be quiet, I, before I get really.
Thank you. Alright, so for myself. Couple of things that I was going to bring up. First of all, Rules Committee met. Last week, was it?
Yeah.
Or the week before?
Maybe the week.
At any rate, we met and we discussed various options. It was brought up, uh, public comment. Um, we brought forward for council to think about, and we're not gonna talk about it tonight, but to think about a couple of options, or one option. That is utilized in other cities. Um, it was a. Way that the city ran its meetings years ago in the past. And, um. That would allow for city council to hold a workshop meeting. A study session, if you will, prior to the regular business meeting. So prior to tonight's meeting at five thirty, we would have started. A workshop study session where department heads would give their reports. And questions would be asked by council and all that discussion would happen. Public is invited to be there as they are for all meetings. And then immediately afterward at six thirty, the regular meeting would start. And the agenda would be similar in that public comment would be right there at the beginning. Public attends the study session. You hear all the proposals from staff, you hear everything that's going to be on the agenda. All the debate, all the discussion happens at that time. The public can then make the comments on what they have heard. Or perhaps your questions may have been answered during the study session. But at any rate, you'll have the opportunity to comment from a point of having more information. Um, about what's going to be on the agenda. And that might save all of us, um, a little bit of grief. You'll have to start a little bit earlier, as will we. But, um, then you'd be a little more clear on what council is discussing. The other side of that would be the fact that council meetings might be shorter because we will have already had our discussion, received our reports from staff members. And. Then we're just gonna go right to the vote. Um, so that's something that we're thinking about. We're also looking at revising some rules and, and taking some. Changes in that as well, so we'll have another meeting coming up shortly. Uh, Public Safety met tonight and the main topic of discussion was interpretive services. So to have an interpreter present or whether we're going to do this via a service that. We can look at, um, we're looking at pricing, cost for that, to have a person present for the three hours of a meeting would be. Probably astronomical as they charge by the minute, but we are looking at different options, so, um, look forward to that coming. Up in a future meeting. Um, the warming center was brought up tonight, um, questioning about the budget and the spending and all of that, and I agree that that did. Probably get a little bit expensive, but I will take the credit for that. I went to the manager, um, I had stopped at. A. Oh, someplace in Sunnyside and I saw one of those, uh, shopping carts. And it reminded me that there are homeless people in town and it was going to get extremely cold. So I went to City Hall and I spoke to the manager, I said, we need to do something. She tasked some of her staff to get to work on that and in less than twenty-four hours, we had something set up and ready to go. It wasn't ready to go for that night. But it was ready for the next. We had food brought in, we had people donating food, we had people donating. Uh, Walmart, I believe, donated mattresses and blankets. Um, I think they had up to twenty, twenty-five people there at one time. I don't remember the exact numbers. Um, but we were able to help people find a place out of the cold. As far as the expense goes, um. Yeah, we didn't have it all planned and budgeted. It wasn't laid out beforehand. This was a very fast process. And I'm gonna go out on the line and I'm gonna say that one life is easily worth a ten thousand dollar expense. So you can call me out, you can call me what you want, but I honestly believe that life is valuable and I do not want people in Sunnyside freezing to death. So that warming center, um, I'll take the blame for it, if that's what you wanna give. And then I also have a question and this is for our code enforcement. I know we have a lot of. Home businesses in town and I'm a big fan of those.
Yes.
Except when it becomes an auto repair place on a city street with the, all of the customers' cars parked out there. I have been receiving complaints from citizens about that and. Something needs to be done about that. I know most of the guys, I know so, I know of at least two of them that are within, I mean, I drive by them all the time. And they try for the most part to keep the cars parked, but then they end up on the yard, which is against city code and so. We need to come up with some sort of a solution for that. I know many mechanics have a shop.
Yeah, so the, the rule now that a business can be run from the home as long as the homes continues to appear as a home. Once it starts to appear as a commercial business, we go and address the, the property. Um, we like to work with the property owners as best we can before leveraging any sort of citations or anything like that, um. Sometimes we have to go down that route, but that's typically the, the approach we take, yeah, so if you have an address for me, I will happily look into it.
Share that with you after the meeting. Alright, and that is all.
I'm sorry.
Ms. Rousto?
Um, I know I said I didn't have a comment, but could I take back the time? Cause I, I think it's really important for me to make this comment.
Ms. Rousto, you have the floor.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm sorry, um. Uh, city manager. Decided to leave, but I really wanted to direct this comment to, to her. Um, she mentioned that this was about races, not about race, and I regret that she made that comment. This isn't personal, um, this is business, um. And this is also wasn't a random decision. This is a, this was a thought out decision. When you have a community, um, asking for more transparency, um. When we want more transparency or have been asking for more transparency around the budget and. Things aren't looking upwards, um, regardless of what has been said, regardless of the surplus, um. We then are. Left with a very hard, um, decision, uh, to make for the future of our city. So this was a random, this wasn't about race and I want to make that very clear. It also wasn't about gender, um, it is about a position. And a person behind that position that I believe. Hasn't been coming through. And executing the job for the right and the benefit of our constituents. Now, um. Uh, Ms. Horner, um, I don't know if I could make this direction, but I wanna make sure that we proceed with making sure that, um. Uh, we, she, uh. City Manager Alba, uh, doesn't have access to financial accounts. Um, and we proceed with the process in, um, figuring out our interim. Um, and making sure that we keep business running, um, as usual and as effective as we can.
So at this point, council has not appointed an interim. And we can. Do that this evening or we can have meetings and appoint an interim at. A later date. I would suggest that we have somebody in place as soon as absolutely possible. Because effect, effectively what we have done is we've left this city without a head. Nobody is in charge and who does staff answer to? Staff does not answer to us under any circumstances. And so therefore we do need to appoint an interim city manager and I would entertain a. Conversation about that at this time. Mr. Beeler?
Uh, um, Martin on the table. He's up there in the main office.
I will respectfully decline that.
Okay, Mr. Galvan?
So I know, um, Raul was already tasked. Be the temporary city manager for this week. I say we keep him on until we can meet and talk about an interim city manager.
Yes, while. Ms. Alba was gonna be off on vacation, she did appoint me to be sitting in her seat while she was on vacation. Um, and I agreed to that for that, for that period. But, um, I was in no way feeling that I would be qualified or would want to do that long term until we figure something out.
Okay, so you, are you declining then?
Yes.
Okay.
I don't think we'll leave it long term. I think by the next council meeting, we could have something in place for interim. So two weeks?
Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Hart?
I think that's, that's, I think that's, uh, again, short sighted thinking. Um, under the, under the cause of. Knowing somebody who at least knows something about what's going on over at City Hall, I would think that, uh, the, uh. Uh, proper person to have step up into that would be Ms. Ms. Horner, as her being the, the, uh. And I hear some comments. And I don't think that that's necessary. But I think Ms. Horner would be the proper person to have at least in term, maybe following the week of vacation that Mr. Sanchez is going to be doing. And then have her as the, cause she does know where all the, uh, what do you call them, skeletons are buried. And, uh, so I would think that if we were gonna appoint somebody in an interim, that would be the logical choice, um. That's all I have right there.
Okay, I understand for staff and department heads, this is quite a, quite a shock to overcome to each of you. In the past, we have appointed, uh, either police chief or fire chief. Um, that has been a role that has been taken up. I don't know if Chief Hobrick is interested in pursuing that. I'm. Uh, Chief Lehman is not present this evening, so I'm not going to speak for him or put him into something that he's not, uh, willing to jump into, um. Keeping in mind that Mr. Sanchez has been in his position for six months, although you've worked with Public Works for many years. Um, it may seem a little bit early to put you in there long term. However, you have agreed to serve for the week. Executive committee's gonna have to meet and we're gonna have to talk about that and council's gonna have to have an emergency meeting. And that means that it's going to, well, Monday's a holiday, so it's going to be next Tuesday. I'm not sure if I'm going to be in town. But we're gonna have to meet. In order to get something done. Is there any objection to that?
I think that's what we gotta do.
Okay, so let's plan on an emergency council meeting Tuesday. That is the twentieth. Of February. Two thousand and twenty-four. Where we will discuss. An interim until we. Decide, and we'll discuss, we're gonna discuss a course of action as well. We will put in place. An interim city manager until such time as we get things moving forward. Mr. Beeler?
Would you consider doing it for two weeks? Cause we need someone like tomorrow morning. We just, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Sanchez.
So Mr. Sanchez will be our acting city manager for, for two weeks and we will promise not to make it longer than that, sir.
Thank you.
It's a, it's a huge job that you're stepping into, um. You've got a very good staff to work with and they will be incredibly helpful. Yeah. This is, uh, this is not the direction I was, uh, planning on ending this meeting. Ms. Hart?
I have one more thing. I sort of settled down a little bit here emotionally. But what I wanted to say from the comments tonight from the public. I want to apologize to my fellow council members if I in some way offended anyone. I certainly did not mean to. That's not my nature to go around offending people inadvertently or deliberately. So please accept my apology of, uh, if I in any way, um, overstep the boundaries. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hart. Next item on the agenda is the upcoming council meetings. And if we could, uh, get our clerk to put the upcoming meetings on the screen. Alright, February twelve is today, February twenty-sixth, regular meeting. We've got the usual, uh, the consent agenda obviously will be on there. Uh, the active agenda, we will have the same types of things that, uh. Normally come up there, they're gonna have to be brought before council. Um, agenda items that council members wanna bring forward, please get those to me at this time or the clerk.
I just wanna say one more thing.
Ms. Hart, we're gonna let you wait on that just a little bit, if you don't mind. Thank you. Alright, so we need to get those agenda items to myself or to the clerk to prepare the agenda for our next meeting. Uh, Mr. Sanchez will take on the role as well, so make sure you get, if you can also get them to him. Alright, so February twenty-sixth is the next meeting, February fourth, or March four, the workshop, we've got stormwater rate analysis. We've got a water system plan, agenda process review, receiving comments after each agenda item. Um, that is something that Rules Committee is going to talk about on Wednesday. And then, uh, also doing something about the repealed ordinances that are linked in code publishing, we'll try to clean up some of that. Again. Items for the agenda need to be turned in to our acting manager. On the Wednesday before the meeting. Yes, we haven't. We haven't voted to change that yet, so. Rules Committee will be meeting on Wednesday. At nine. Yes. Okay, items from department heads and we are going to start at the far end of the table there. Ms. Horner?
Thank you.
Or Lucia if you wish to.
Mr. Mayor, uh, Lucia doesn't have anything to report tonight, she said. Okay. Um, I wanted to comment on a couple of the things that were brought up in the public comments section. Um, someone again mentioned a missing two million dollars. As I have stated multiple times, there is no money missing either in the fund year twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three. Um, I have been very open and transparent with those members and have given anyone who has come to my office or asked the questions. Access to, to looking at those and I believe everyone sitting on. The council dais right now has seen them in one way or another and not one of you has told me that you still have concerns, so. I'm hoping that you still, based on what happened tonight, I'm, I'm a little unsure and I'm. Feeling a little insecure, um, because I think a lot of this issue with the two million dollars. Came through rumors in the public by a handful of people, um. And it is completely unfounded and I can tell you that the state auditor's office has been with us for a couple of months. And they have found no issues. Um, our audit is almost over. There has been nothing brought forward that has been concerning. So I, I caution the council to please actually get the info. So I, I caution the council to please actually get the information and not to listen to rumors that are in the community because I do have the information. I am absolutely willing to share it with anyone who wants to have it. Those people that have gotten up here in council and mentioned missing money, not one of those people has come to my office and asked to actually see the numbers. Um, I have offered time and time again, but in fact, some of those people have said, we don't want to ask you, Jameson, because we don't, we're not, we know we're not gonna believe anything that you say. Or if I tell you what exactly my question is, then you'll know. So you'll be able to answer it and that I don't want you to know what my question is. So from my perspective, um, I, I feel that myself and the former city manager Alba were the target of a concerted effort to slander us and, and to, um, call question into the financials. That being said, I do understand that there are concerns about the expenditures for the city, particularly in the water fund, which were also brought up in public comment tonight. Um, uh, one of our public commenters mentioned something about well one or two. I believe she might be referring to Wells eleven, twelve and thirteen. Um, and that they had to have some work done on them. Uh, the commenter mentioned that that money was coming out of the general fund. That is not correct. The project that was replaced was the water power, water tower painting project. So that was funded out of the water department. So the general fund is not supporting, uh, that work. Um, another public comment that came up was, uh, the Rod's House and staff overtime for the warming center. Um, this is preliminary numbers, but what, from what I pulled today and they're, they're unaudited. Um, it does look like we spent seven thousand two hundred dollars in overtime for city staff. And we paid one thousand nine hundred dollars, these are round give about, um, to outside people that were associated with Rod's House to provide that. So a total of about nine thousand one hundred dollars, I believe is what was spent. Like I said, I haven't audited that. That's preliminary numbers that I'm pulling up in the system tonight. Um, just FYI, we are finishing up the financials for twenty twenty-three. Um, preliminary ending fund balance amount for twenty twenty-three for the entire, for all the operating funds in the city was fifteen is, is approximately fifteen point nine million. Um, which is one, almost one point five million dollars more than what we had put into the budget. And this is just an example of how when we talk about conservative budgeting and estimating our expenditures on the worst day, basically if we had to pay for everything and our revenues on the worst day, basically if nobody paid us for anything, would we still be able to pay all of our bills? And that's how based on the direction of the city manager and the previous council that we have done our budgeting process. Um, so that is where we, at the end of the year, almost always we're gonna have a higher number in our fund balances than what we had estimated. So just so you're aware, um, it's looking at about fifteen point nine million versus the fourteen point five million that was projected. Um, we, as Mr. Martin and Mr. Uh, Sanchez mentioned earlier in regards to surplus items, department heads have gotten together to talk about, um, going through the entire city for equipment, uh, vehicles and unused supplies, things like that, that can be surplus. And we are gonna try to do a full, um, citywide surplus in April, as Mr. Martin said, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Ms. Horner. Commander?
I don't know. I have anything.
All right. San, Mr. Sanchez?
Good evening. Um, yes, there's a few things that I just wanted to, um, update you with that has been going on in, in Public Works. Uh, one is, um, we have a vector truck that, um, was taken for service, uh, on a, uh, an item that it needed to be repaired in, in Tri-Cities and it was during the week that was really cold. Uh, so the shop that had it, somewhere there's some, there was some misunderstanding and they left it outside and the water pump froze. So, uh, we went back and forth. Um, so we, it's, it's obviously the only one we have, so we needed to get that repaired. Um, so we, we turned in the claim to our city insurance to, to take care of that. In the meantime, we did send it in to Owen Equipment, who is the rep for that kind of a pump and for that truck. And so we got that back on Friday. Um, I just want to let you know too, because you're gonna see an invoice coming where we had to take care of it. But it's turned over to the, after that it'll be, I mean, it's part of the insurance, um, that, um, we filed a claim with. Um, so that's on that. Um, the sixth street, the lights got turned on Thursday and Friday. There's still a couple legs that they, after they turned them on, they found out there's some, there's some fixing they need to do. Um, so they're coming back this week to take care of that. One's on the the east side, on the south side of the tracks, and then on the north, on the west side, there's, there's a section there that, uh, they need to come back and, and take care of. Um, a few months ago, um, it came up about Spalding. Uh, we've been working on that. We have the flyers. We are planning on, uh, doing an announcement on, uh, city's, uh, website and other platforms to put it out, um, hang, uh, do some hangers. And, um, it would take effect around March first, if everything goes as scheduled. Uh, to where it'll be maybe one way and at the sector on Spalding between, uh, Rozier and First. Um, and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Hart?
Hello, um, so just a few things for council tonight, um, over since the beginning of the year. Um, as you know, the winter months are kind of slow in the building department. The ground gets soggy. We don't, there's not a lot of building and digging going on. Um, but so, so far this year, um, the city has created thirty-seven records, done eighty-two inspections, clicked it, collected over a little, little over fifteen thousand dollars in revenues for permitting and issued thirty-five permits. Um, we expect that to start picking up here, even looking at the graph a little bit. I know you can't really see it that well, but here's the beginning of January. Here's the last week in February and you can kind of see that more's, more's been picking up. So we expect that to hopefully pick, pick up, pick back up here as, well, I guess it's not quite spring yet, but the weather's been cooperative. Um, number two is that this Friday on the fifteenth, we're having a small business development seminar at the community center, one from eleven to approximately eleven to one and then another one approximately five thirty to seven thirty-ish. Um, we're gonna be doing a couple of fun things there. We're gonna be talking about different community resources, Yakima Valley resources. We're gonna be talking about a SWAT analysis. The Community Economic Development Commission is moving forward with composing a economic development plan for the city of Sunnyside to, to start to develop an economic identity as we move forward. So I think that'll be really fun and something to, to explore with the, with the participants in this, in this meeting coming up. Um, and again, we, we will have, uh, we'll have some water bottles, probably some fruit and donuts and, uh, translation services on hand as well.
Mr. Martin, sorry to interrupt you. Did you say Friday or do you mean Thursday? Thursday, okay. That I heard Friday. Okay.
Oh, yeah. Thurs- Thursday, Thursday. Yes. Um, let's see here. Um, and then, um, yeah, Thursday, yes. Um, we have, the city has a revolving loan fund. We're using part of our ARPA money to, to fund a revolving loan fund um, for small business development. It's sort of some sort of, uh, gap funding as for business startup, business modifications. Um, really low interest rates. We have two candidates that we, that the Community Economic Development Commission has reviewed and I'll be bringing those to council during the next council meeting. So they have some really good projects. Um, and I hope to, I look forward to sharing those with you. Um, and then we are looking forward also towards the, um, fire marshal position for commercial inspections. I know that I've brought this up several times. Um, we haven't really, the city has not been conducting any fire inspection, commercial fire inspections since two thousand and twenty-one. We will get back online with that hopefully very, very soon and then resume those fire inspections and those commercial fire inspections in the community. Um, so that's, uh, that's all I have for you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Reddy? Um, typically we don't report a whole lot and what we do legally with the city, I will have some numbers for you actually today as far as prosecution goes, as well as our civil matters going forward, if you'd like that at this point. Uh, for the year of two thousand and twenty-three, there was three, six hundred and four cases filed that are actively being prosecuted. Um, several has been resolved. We don't have the resolution numbers yet because they haven't been processed by Department of Corrections at this point yet. Uh, we're actually prosecuting two different dockets per week, um, with multiple public defenders at that point. Um, we haven't had any trials yet this year. One is set for tomorrow. Uh, we don't know if it's going to resolve or not going forward on that. Uh, for that matter. Um, as far as civil matters go, we do have four outstanding cases currently at this point now. Uh, they range from a variety of different topics. Um, typically we discuss those in executive session so the city can be aware of, uh, the status of those going forward on that because they're of legal nature, uh, going forward on that. But anyone has any questions about that, feel free to contact me. We're happy to go over that with you going forward at this point. So that's all I have. Unless anyone has any questions this time. Questions for Mr. Reddy? Thank you, sir. Chief?
So unfortunately I had some login issues with my record management system, uh, today. I apologize. So normally the, the numbers I provide, I unfortunately don't have them. I apologize for that. Um, but just kind of some up, uh, updates from the fire department, um, as we've reported pretty consistently with our apparatus coming in. Um, we're definitely on track. We're hoping for delivery of the new ambulance here in the next couple of weeks. Um, and then the, uh, the fire engine is in Cascade, uh, excuse me, in Yakima at Cascade Fire, whom we purchased it through getting outfitted. So we're hoping to see that here and in service shortly. So we're, we're very excited.
Thank you, sir. I'm clerk.
I have nothing to report. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. There being no further business to come before council and without objection, this meeting is adjourned at eight fifty-two. Good night, everybody.